Move along because there's a big agenda, thank you.
But happy birthday. All right, good. All right. From a lot of you, as either the applicant or any interest party, you have the opportunity to speak for or against a case, to share a comment or ask a question. Prior to speaking, please state your name and your address, and then address your testimony, comments, and questions to the chair. In addition, in order to facilitate an early and efficient meeting tonight, we have a standing rule that allows no more than five minutes to speak. All right. Anybody who thinks they will speak? If you would please stand. That would be any applicants, anybody is speaking for or against? Okay, just raise your right hand. Do you promise, to the best of your ability, to tell the truth in this hearing? If so, say I will. All right, thank you very much, you can see. All right, and Steph, let's move on to our first case of the evening.
So this is case 25118. The applicant is the city, this is a city-initiated rezoning action to properties located north of Farmer, south of Needleton, east of Spring, west of Main, from R30 PUD, High Density Residential Planned Unit Development, to R6 Single Family Residential and R6 PUD Single Family Residential Planned Unit Development. So looking at our vicinity map here, it's north of Truman Road there and west of Nolan Road, as you can see where that red star is. So the zoning surrounding this area of R30 includes additional R6 and R30 PUD with a mixture of one, two multifamily to the north, there's commercial to the south toward Truman Road, as well as additional R30 PUD in the vicinity with one multifamily housing. To the east, you've got commercial and two-family and multifamily, and one-family, two-family, multifamily in C1 and R6 and R30 PUD districts. And to the west, it's mainly scattered R30 PUD uses, full of one, two, and multiple family housing. So you can see the blue, or the, I guess it's turquoise teal, rectangles, those are the properties in question, are subject to the rezoning, and the other zonings are in the vicinity or around that, as you see. Comprehensive plan envisions this whole area for residential urban neighborhood use. And the notification zone, of course, is 185 feet around all this cluster of different properties, and those properties all got notification, as well as the properties that are subject to the rezoning request. So here's the aerial photograph of the area, kind of fuzzy, I didn't realize it was that, not real clear, but this is the area basically north of, about block and a half north of the square, between Nolan Road and Spring. So zoning history of the area, you've got platted, number of platted subdivisions there, the Independence Annex, Ott, George Clinton Homestead, Flornoy's, John Sullivan, Fantasy Caldwell additions. The southern half of this proposed rezoning area was part of the city since 1849, the northern half was later annexed in 1851, so this is some of the oldest core neighborhoods of the city. At the time that city adopted its zoning map, which was in 1965, most of these properties were designated R4 High Density Residential. And then in 2009, when we got our new UDO, these properties got their new label for R4, which is R30 PUD High Density Residential Planned Unit Development. So this proposal involves the city seeking to rezone most of the area properties to R6 Single Family Residential to better conform with the existing land use and character that's in the surrounding neighborhood. There's about a dozen of them, though, that would be more than just R6, R6 PUD, mainly because of the non-conformity of their setbacks would make it difficult for them to do additions or rebuilding without having that PUD as part of their designation. The R30 PUD zoning does not allow single-family residences, and all of these properties that we've identified here are zoned R30 PUD but have single-family residences. So everyone has a legal non-conforming issue problem. Property characteristics, the residences in the zoning district vary in era from the 1870s to the 1950s, most of the single-family homes in the district are similar in size, many are similar in design, there's some differences. Characteristics of the area, the zoning district comprises much of the housing north of the square, the surrounding homes, like I said, dated from the late 19th and early 20th century. As far as its consistency with our strategic plan, this proposal conforms to that, in that it quote, "will help to stabilize and revitalize neighborhoods." So this will help ensure that these areas remain single-family in use. A comprehensive plan tool and policies for the current designation, the city's comprehensive plan envisions the area to be designated for residential established neighborhoods, the policy tool identified would be basically to support the preservation and protection of properties. This area north of the square is not in a sub-area plan. Of course, as far as zonings go, the proposed R6, as well as the R6 PUD, is our most common classification of zoning here in the city for single-family homes, allows for that and for civic uses like schools, churches, government facilities, and daycare, whatnot. Currently, again, most of the homes are zoned R30 PUD, which since the UDO was redone in 2009 excludes single-family as a use, so this use allows for two-family and multifamily as it now stands, as well as other civic uses and schools and whatnot. The historic and architectural sites, there are no apparent historic and architectural issues with this area. Public utilities, all the public utilities are already in place, being a developed neighborhood. Floodplain stream buffer, there are no federal floodplains, nor is it within nor is it within the city's designated stream buffer areas. And there are no planned CIP investments for this area at this time. So as far as our recommendation goes, staff recommends approval of this rezoning for most of the properties. They would be rezoned from R-6 to R-30 PUD. There are a dozen properties there along Osage, Main, Needleton, College, and Farmer that would be rezoned to the R-6 PUD category because of the following described condition. The following condition shall be applied to those properties that are zoned R-6 PUD. Current lot size and setbacks, as established on these properties, shall be set for reconstruction and rehabilitation of the existing structures. So that concludes my presentation, and I'm ready to take any questions you may have.
All right, thank you, Brian. Commissioners, any questions for staff?
No, Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
Just wanted to be clear. It appears this way, but I wanted to be sure. So some of the properties in there are R-30 and conform with the current zoning? Or are all these?
All of these are single-family.
All these are single-family that you have on the list?
Yes.
Okay. But there are properties there like apartments and stuff which...
Adjacent, and we excluded them. And that's why the fragmented look of that map.
So in the future, if one of these R-30 structures were perhaps to, you know, catch fire, burn down, or a person sells or decides to tear it down, does it remain R-30? If somebody comes in and wants to rebuild an R-30 structure? Or are you going to require they go back to R-6?
Are you talking about the properties outside of this area? Or are you talking inside the area to be rezoned? Inside the area to be rezoned, it's R-6 forever?
If it's R-30 now...
Right, this changes the zoning to R-6 permanently.
If it's a legal conforming, R-30, it's an apartment building.
There are no legal, because they were all single-family that we identified.
The ones that you're identifying, yes.
Yes, and those are the ones being rezoned.
The ones now that are adjacent to...
Yeah, but they're outside of the consideration.
Okay, I'm listening to you when I'm asking you. What I'm saying is, since it's adjacent to the area, would the city leave it R-30? Or because it's adjacent in an R-6 neighborhood, would they most likely ask that to return to an R-6 so that more single-family homes would be there instead of R-30?
Yeah, they would have to come to us and request to join this district if they're now vacant lot after their house burned down. They wanted to build a single-family house. They would have to, because you can't build a single-family house in an R-30.
But Brian, that's not what he's asking. He's asking if it burns down, can they build another apartment?
For example...
Oh, yeah, outside, yes, because it's zoned R-30.
Okay, so it said he's happy with that being an R-30? If it's currently an R-30?
I mean, our plan says it's okay.
Okay, like 324 West College is an apartment?
Right.
Okay, so that would remain apartment even if that structure burned down?
Yes.
And an applicant came back and wanted to build an R-30 there, the city would allow that?
Yeah, that is allowed by right, yes.
Thank you.
Right, any additional questions for staff?
Yeah, please, please.
Yes, Commissioner Nesbit.
Now, did you verify that all these homes do not have any apartments in them, even though they are single-family homes?
Yeah, we went out and checked. Looked at meters, looked at mailboxes.
Okay, well, because I just want to make sure, because I mean, some of these people, I've seen houses down in Kansas City, they put eight apartments in a house.
I mean, there could be something hidden in there where they didn't have, they have one utility and they only have one mailbox and...
Okay, well, as long as you check mailboxes, I'm sure that'd be the way to verify it, because they only have one mailbox for all that stuff. I just wanted to make sure. My other question was like on Main. I did see that the house is pretty long driveway. That just was worrying me there, that big lot there that was on Main. I think it's five? 715 North Main? That seems like a big lot there for, is it just, it almost like it's got two structures on it, but I just wanted to make sure, just the garage at the back?
Yeah, the county for land uses for taxation identified it as single-family. And we did send out letters, so...
Okay, I just wanted to verify that, thank you.
All right. Brian, I have one question. You mentioned the historic, there's no historic value, and yet I heard 1849. So I just want to make sure, how do we, does this rezoning change affect future historic designation? If we find out?
I mean, this would be helpful toward that goal of maintaining the integrity of the neighborhood, which was built to be single-family.
Yes.
So it would help in case we wanted to expand some historic district in there in the future, yes.
Great, I just wanted to clarify that, thank you. All right, I'm going to go ahead and open it up to anyone who'd like to speak in favor of this case. Anyone who'd like to come forward and speak in favor? Thank you, sir. Just give your name and your address before you speak.
My name is Emmett Morris, and my address is 508 North Liberty Street. I just think that the planning commission, since it's been recommended by the city, needs to go ahead and approve it. I do know from, without a lot of research, that you've been doing this in this area before with other similar properties. I think about maybe a year ago, maybe it was early in the spring. I don't know, my time gets mixed up. But there was another similar matter that came before you, and you designated, sometime you revisited. It was like around Nolan and Waldo or whatever. So I think you're being consistent, of course, if this is a similar matter of going into this neighborhood and giving it some protection for the future to remain, to go back to what it originally had been in terms of being single-family residences. So I've just encouraged you to do that. You all know the value that comes from having homeowners in a neighborhood versus renters, although I've been a renter. Nothing wrong with renters, but it really gives the neighborhood a solid base for growth.
All right, thank you so much. Anyone else present that'd like to speak in favor? All right, anyone present that'd like to speak in opposition? I'll ask again, anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to make the motion to approve case 25118.
All right, I have a motion.
I second.
And I have a second. Any final discussion, Commissioners? All right, I'm going to call for the vote.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Chairman Wiley?
Yes, and the motion passes seven to zero for case number 251019, excuse me, 1018. And that is North Square. All right, let's move on to our next case. That would be for case 251019, rezoning of North Dodgen.
Yes, this is another staff-initiated rezoning. So we've got two of those tonight. The city is proposing to rezone properties along Dodgen Avenue, one block east of Nolan Road, between College on the south and US 24 Highway on the north. The current zoning classifications of those properties are C-2, general commercial, and C-1, neighborhood commercial. And the proposed rezoning will be to single-family residential, R-6, and R-6 PUD. There's a notification area map as required by city code. The surrounding zoning and land uses for the subject site. So to the north of the subject site includes auto repair, auto sales, and self-storage facilities. To the south of the subject properties is residential neighborhoods and a print shop in an industrial zoning district. To the east of the subject properties is additional single-family residential neighborhoods and that self-storage facility. And to the west is a commercial corridor containing a variety of general commercial uses, including food establishments, animal services, personal services, general retail, and residential uses as well. The comprehensive plan designates this area, the majority of it, as the neighborhood land use category. The comprehensive plan directs the city to encourage the protection of existing residential areas from incompatible development. And an R-6 PUD classification is appropriate to encourage the preservation of historic and visual character of established neighborhoods. Aerial imagery of the subject properties and a little bit of background. Dwellings in the subject area were developed from the late 1800s to about the 1950s. The area is defined by ranch-style and bungalow-style homes. Dwellings vary in size from as small as 750 square feet to as large as 2,700 square feet. Lot sizes vary largely as well, minimum of 5,500 square feet to 12,000 square feet in size. A total of 23 properties are included in the staff-initiated rezoning. So that'd be 23 tax parcels. Staff does recommend approval of the rezoning. There are two separate requests. Properties at 700, 800, 801 are proposed to be rezoned from C-1 and C-2 to R-6. And the properties at 708, 716, 718 are proposed to be rezoned from C-2 to R-6 PUD with the condition that the current lot size and setbacks, as established on these properties, shall be set for reconstruction and rehabilitation subject to the discretion of the Community Development Department. That concludes my presentation for the staff-initiated rezoning. And if you have any questions, please hesitate.
All right, any questions for staff?
Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay, what's our mistakes? You don't pick it up either, do you? 813 North Dodgen, where's it at? You got it marked on here, it's not on paperwork correctly. So which one is it supposed to be under? The C-1, C-2, or the R-PUD 6?
And is that, for clarification, on the staff report?
It's on the paperwork here, yes. That's what you got?
It's on both.
813?
No, 812.
Yeah, 812's on both, but one of them's probably supposed to be 813.
Correct.
So say that one more time, repeat your question.
Which one is it supposed to be on? On the C-1, C-2, or the R-6 PUD? 813, because it's not correctly marked on here.
And I'm not seeing 813.
Well, I see it on my Google Maps, that's why I'm wondering what's going on.
So the Google Maps address may not match the CITUS address assigned by Jackson County.
Okay, well, about 817 then, let's see. I'm trying to figure this out here.
So the property addresses are generated from Jackson County records. So if there's a discrepancy between Google Maps and county records, that may be the reasoning behind that.
Okay, but like you say, on our paperwork, you got 812 on both, both of them.
And that may be a mistake on my part, so I do apologize.
Okay, then let's go to the map. What is the big square? What's the address of the big square on the right side? When I'm looking at this third one up from, I don't even know what the word road is, East something.
Yeah, no, so you're spot on. So at the northeast corner of Needleton Avenue and Dodgen Avenue. So that's one of those cases where Google Maps will assign additional street addresses. And there are available street addresses for...
Well, you got marked out there, you got the big purple on it on the map. What is that, what's that address?
So that is 805 North Dodgen.
That's 805?
And that property in particular is composed of multiple platted lots.
Okay, so you go 801, the first one, the second one's 805, and the third one's 805?
So this is one single-family dwelling that is comprised of three tax parcels. So one street address for the single-family dwelling is 805 North Dodgen Avenue. While there are additional tax parcels that comprise that single-family dwelling and multiple lots, the street address for the single-family dwelling is 805 North Dodgen.
805, so basically those two lots are 805, okay. So then my question's going to be back to, which one are we taking out of the 812?
Yes.
Because that way the paperwork would be correct.
Yeah, thank you for raising that to our attention. So 812 North Dodgen Avenue should be corrected to R-6 PUD from C-2, general commercial, to R-6 PUD. The reason being behind that is the lot size and setbacks. So we're adding this condition for certain properties within the subdivision in the case of destruction to an extent of 50% or more of their market value, as determined by Jackson County, that the property can be rebuilt to its current construction. So if it were not assigned that R-6 PUD classification, the city could not add those conditions, allowing the subject sites, specifics cases.
Okay, so you're saying on our paperwork, it should, the 812 on the first line should be taken off?
That's correct.
Okay, note that correction, please.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Nesbit, for that catch. Greatly appreciated. Any additional questions for staff? All right, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing to anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this case. Anyone who'd like to speak in favor? Okay, not seeing any. Would anyone like to speak in opposition? Once again, not seeing any, and we go ahead and close the public hearing. Yes, Commissioner O'Neill?
I move we approve case number twenty-five one hundred dash nineteen, as amended.
All right, I have a motion and a couple of seconds, so thank you for that. All right, any final discussion, Commissioners? All right, I'm gonna call for the vote.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Chair Wiley?
Yes, and the motion passes seven to zero with the amended. And that is for case number two five one hundred one nine. All right, we're gonna move on to our next case, which is a rezoning of Willa-Willa eight, South Woodland Avenue, and one five zero six West Twenty-third Street, and that is case number two five one hundred twenty. Staff?
Okay, this is case twenty-five one hundred twenty, and the applicant is Zachary Whitworth, and it's to rezone what is a duplex property with two addresses on one lot. That's one 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 six South Woodland and one five zero six West Twenty-third Street from industrial I-one to R-twelve, two-family residential. As you can see from the vicinity map, this is on the northwest corner of Twenty-third Street and Woodland, just a little west of Chrisler. On the zoning map, these are the surrounding zonings. You've got, uh, commercial properties on the, on the south along the corridor. That's Twenty-third Street, you got title loans and a payday loan. North is a, single-family neighborhood, including a couple of those industrial lots have, still have, single-family or homes on them. But that neighborhood is, though mainly, single-family, is zoned R-twelve, two-family, which allows for two-family homes and, single-family homes. To the east, across the street, is a car lot. And then to the west, you have, uh, another industrial property that's metal recycling. So this is the comprehensive plan, envisions this area to be residential in nature, residential neighborhoods. So in history, this area was annexed by the city in eighteen fifty-one. The property included in this, uh, application to be rezoned was, uh, platted as a forest home addition in the nineteen twenties. Uh, of course, the duplex, uh, sets on, uh, one of those platted lots. At the time, Independence, uh, enacted zoning in sixty-five, um, the property was zoned M-one, industrial. Of course, the nomenclature for industrial changed in two thousand nine with our UDO, M-one became I-one. The proposal, Zachary B. Whitworth seeks to rezone, uh, the residential units that sit there at the corner of Woodland and Twenty-third, uh, to two-family residential, uh, to satisfy lenders' concerns about the property's legal nonconformity. Uh, this downzoning will better conform to the existing land use and the character of the adjacent neighborhood immediately in the north. Uh, the applicant's property is an early twentieth-century, one-story bungalow home with, uh, off-white woods siding. It was, uh, converted into duplex decades ago by constructing a breezeway to, uh, accessory building in the rear. Uh, the property has existing gravel pull-offs immediately from the gravel alley that provides its off-street parking. Uh, depending on, on the construction costs, any improvements in the future, that's when, um, that driveway might have to be improved. Uh, characteristics of the area, the Twenty-third Street corridor is a busy corridor of, and the main one through the city here. But Woodland Avenue is a street of, single-family homes and with a few duplexes. Again, most of the homes are pre-World War II, bungalow style. As far as this, um, area's consistency with the comprehensive plan, uh, this proposal conforms with, uh, the strategic plan to stabilize and revitalize neighborhoods. The comprehensive plan envisions, um, a, um, residential land use to support the preservation and protective of the, of these older properties. Subarea plan, uh, this duplex is in an area that is not identified, uh, with a subarea plan. Uh, the zoning, R-twelve, again, is, is a two-family zoning, but, um, allows for, single-family uses, which is dominant in this area, um, as well as, uh, different civic and governmental uses as well. It's currently zoned industrial, which of course, this property lacks the depth and size to, uh, probably be used for that zoning. As far as driveway access, again, uh, the duplex gets its access off that alley that is behind, um, being a developed area, um, this, of course, the utilities are already in place. This property is not in an area of a floodplain or a stream buffer, and there are no public improvements that are envisioned in the near future for this, um, property. So this is the notification area, goes up north into the neighborhood a little bit and along the commercial corridors to the east and the west. Um, here's, uh, old plat from the recorder's office showing, um, the original lots that were platted along Woodland here. And this shows, um, that location of that house relative to uses to the west and, and the commercial use also to the east. This is, um, looking directly west at the property, the front of the property. And then this is the, across Woodland, um, the commercial use that lies there. And as you look down Twenty-third Street here, you can see the commu- commercial dominance of the corridor, but you can also see, uh, how this house extends backward, you, back, you can see the, to the west, you can see this, the fence there that, uh, blocks off people from walking under the breezeway. And then the, um, additional unit that's in that, uh, other structure farther west. Recommendation, staff recommends approval of this zoning request, and I'm ready to take any questions you may have.
All right. Any discussion for staff?
Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Nesbit.
Okay, go back to that map that you had lots on.
Are you speaking of the, the recorded one?
Go forward one. No, go that way. Other way.
Other way.
You hit, you hit it just a second, right there.
Yes.
Okay, you got that brought up there. Do you think that's the proper zone on there, or do you think that's just something you highlighted?
You mean the, uh...
Boundary lines.
The TL boundaries?
Yeah.
The, 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 the property boundaries that the county provides and the underlying aerial photograph are not lined up as they should be, so...
Okay.
That property line does not go through the neighbor's house.
Okay, well, that's what I was wanting at, and then I got to looking, the other, the one next to it, looks like to me, they built it on, across the property line too, and that's why I was trying to figure out, how did that happen?
Yeah, they're just not aligned, the county.
Well, I'm just saying, the house next to it did build across the property line, it looks like to me, in the back of the other one. Because I mean on lot number nine and ten. That's why I was looking at there in the picture that I see. So I'm just questioning that. And then that alleyway, that is, is that zoned an alleyway, or is that just something that people use?
I don't think that's, I, at, an actual platted alleyway, but it's their drive access.
My next question's gonna be, if we rezone this, is the owner gonna have to put in a paved parking area?
Only if they actually do constructions at a level that would trigger them having to bring the property up to the current zoning code requirements.
Okay, so what I'm saying, I know it's a duplex, so under our current code for landlords, does it say anything about parking, have an adequate parking for cars or anything on the current landlord?
I'm not, I'm not real familiar with that. I mean, it's exist, the uses has been existing, and the parking is existing, so...
Well, I understand that, but I, I mean, since we're changing this up, I just wanna make sure if something happens, the owner knows that he's gonna have to probably bring that up and to solid parking area, not gravel. I don't know what...
I, I don't think, unless there's, uh, construction at a value above fifty percent, the market value of the property.
Okay, so, so in other words, she gets a permit to put down a roof or something like that, he's not gonna have to worry about fixing the driveway?
Right.
Okay, but it's only, only if they do fifty percent of it.
Although he will get in trouble if he lets that gravel driveway disappear. And, and, and it becomes overgrown with grass, then you lose your legal nonconformity, and then you'll have to put in a paved driveway.
Okay, well, I just want the owner to know all that, thank you.
All right, any additional questions for staff? All right, seeing that, I'm gonna invite the applicant to come forward. Is the applicant present? Mr. Whitworth? Okay? Okay, wait, whoa, whoa, whoa. Come forward to the, the microphone. And did you stand and get sworn in?
I did not, sorry.
Okay, so would you raise your right hand? Do you promise to, with the best of your ability, tell the truth about this case? If so, say, "I will."
I will.
All right, thank you. State your name and your address.
David Gilpatrick, one twenty-three East Kansas Avenue.
And you are here on behalf of the Mr. Whitworth?
Yes.
Okay, what, would you like us to know about this?
Um, he's my son-in-law, and he lives in Florida, that's why he's not here. And he asked us to come up here and answer any questions if we needed.
Are you familiar with the property?
Yes.
So what is, um, the alley itself, expect any changes, um, over that fifty percent line of cost changes?
No, because the alley goes all the way down, it passes several houses. It's not just, just for their parking area. They pull in and they have the gravel area, and it...
Do you know if there's been any discussion that would trigger the need to pave?
No.
Okay. Anything else you'd like us to know?
Nope, they, they, they're trying to improve it, to improve the area and make it look good, so...
All right. Any questions for this gentleman?
Do you think he did this before he could get a loan that was restricting him? Because it's I-one, not R-twelve?
That I do not know.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
My wife is telling me, no, he didn't want to do this to get a loan.
Okay, thank you. So staff, that does bring up a question, under I-one, it would currently not be able to, so if he wanted to, we would need to fix the zoning to allow for that?
To, if he were to want to apply for some financing? Some financial institutions will, will require that, some overlook it sometimes, which, I don't know why.
Okay. So this could be the right move for this client in the, if the need arises for funding?
And it's not just, it's not just that, it's in case there's catastrophic destruction and you need to rebuild, you know, or if you want to do a major rehab or addition, so...
Okay, great, thank you. All right. Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to this case? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. All right, any additional comments?
Chair.
Yes, Commissioner?
I'm making motion we approve case twenty-five one hundred dash twenty.
Right of first? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, I do have a second. Any final discussion?
I have one question, Chair.
Yes.
Uh, there was an email that was included in our packet that does say that the property is on contract for sale, and that it needs to be changed in order for the sale to happen. Is what I'm, what I'm reading, unless this is not attached to this one.
Brian, do you know if this isn't attached to this right case?
Let's see, I'm trying to remember off the top of my head, I'm gonna have to look. Yeah, that, that, that email is, in fact, yes.
So just to clarify, sale goes through, somebody wants to improve the property, at that point, they would have to come back and reapply for changes to the property, not the, if we approve the rezoning, not the rezoning, but, but building or anything? Correct.
You mean, if, if, if they wanted to do construction of the...
Correct.
Yeah, that'd be totally, you know, internal, yes, administrative, but yes.
Okay. New that, just wanted to clarify. All right. I'm gonna go ahead and call for the vote.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
And Chairman Wiley?
Yes. So the case passes seven to zero for case number two five. One hundred twenty for rezoning at one one five, excuse me, one one six, South Woodland, and one five zero six, West Twenty-third Street. All right, we will move on to the next case, case two five two hundred ten, for a special use permit for Seven-Eleven North Arapahoe. Staff?
Yeah, case twenty-five two hundred ten is a request by Nathan Bobbitt to operate a bed and breakfast at Seven-Eleven North Arapahoe Street. So this is up in the northeast, the Susquehanna area up there, off of Arapahoe, near Cheyenne. You can see where it is, southeast of twenty-four Highway, not too far from Bunshue. So this entire neighborhood is a, single-family neighborhood, zoned, um, R-six, single-family, as you can see, and comprehensive plan envisions that for that purpose. So the proposed, uh, bed and breakfast is located in a subdivision of ranch and split-level homes built in the nineteen sixties. Uh, this, uh, two-car garage house has been a, single-family for its entire existence. Uh, the proposal, uh, the bed and breakfast can accommodate two guests. Uh, the applicants intend to operate on the Airbnb platform. Uh, the applicants will be living on the first floor, so the guests are downstairs. And there's a walking paved area, as you can see on the aerial, to go around back. Physical characteristics of the property, the property features a three-car wide driveway leading to a two-car garage, and a driveway that, that wraps around the west side of the house to the parking area behind the house, with the rear of the house featuring that walkout basement. Uh, the applicant's living space upstairs will have three bedrooms, a bath, kitchen, and living room. Of course, the basement where the guests would be staying have a, is a studio bedroom, it's a closet and a bathroom. Characteristics of the area, uh, it's a well-maintained area, area of ranches and split levels, and again, it's, uh, predominantly, single-family homes. This is, uh, consistent with the, uh, strategic plan to increase economics prosperity of the community, and the comprehensive plan, um, uh, to reserve, preserve the integrity of the existing neighborhoods. This is in the historic, uh, site, um, it's existing... It's an existing developed neighborhood, it's not in the floodplain area. So, as far as inspections, trash collection, and safety provisions, the property will need to meet all the applicable permitting for fire and life safety inspection requirements. The applicants are compliant with the provisions of 14420 of the Unified Development Ordinance. Trash collection will be provided on Friday by Ted's Trash. The applicant will include an escape route map and emergency contact sheets posted on the wall inside of the building. They will provide carbon monoxide detectors, smoke detectors, and they require fire extinguishers and childproof covers for outlets. And we don't see any investments capitalized in this area in the near future. So, this is the notification area, that neighborhood along Arapahoe we were just looking at. And so, here's this downstairs floor plan where the studio apartment is down below, or the studio place to stay. And the evacuation plan out that rear south side. And so, of course, is that big wide, indicates that big wide driveway for enough parking for the applicants themselves, as well as their guests. So, here's the house, looking at, fortunately, this is in the angle of the driveway. And looking up the street one direction, and down the other direction. Staff recommends approval of this special use permit, subject to the following conditions. The bed and breakfast shall obtain a business license in accordance with all city codes and comply with Section 5.01.004, Article 1, Chapter 5 of the City Code. Business license number shall be listed on all advertisements and all online platforms. The business must comply with all safety and other standards required by Section 14420 of the City Code. The bed and breakfast will comply with Article 3, Chapter 5 of the City Code. And the bed and breakfast shall secure refuge collection services from a collector who's licensed to be operating within the City of Independence. Excuse me. The bed and breakfast shall provide the following: a map identifying escape routes, the carbon monoxide detectors as required by code, the childproof electrical outlets, emergency contact information, fire extinguishers as required by code, and smoke detectors as required by code. And the bed and breakfast will only have two adult guests at one time. That concludes my case, and I'm ready to take any questions.
All right, any questions for staff? All right, Brian, I do have one question. This address seems familiar. Did this, is this a...
Yeah, they had...
Family that came before us before?
They had STR two weeks ago, three weeks, or four weeks ago, on Hardy, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I was like, man, that sounds familiar. All right, thank you. Any additional questions for staff? All right, I'm gonna go ahead and invite the applicants to come forward. Right if you state your name and your address.
My name's Adriana, and my address is 711 North Arapahoe Street, Independence, Missouri.
You can move that over right in front of you if you need to.
So, first of all, thank you for hearing our proposal, and thank you too, Brian, for presenting it for us. My husband and I live in a fairly spacious home, it's just the two of us, and we've always loved hosting friends and family, sharing our space, and making people feel welcome. We have a cozy studio in our basement with its own private entrance and bathroom, completely separate from the rest of our home. We also have a beautiful backyard garden and screened-in patio we take great pride in maintaining. Since it's only the two of us living here, we hate to see such a beautiful space go to waste when it could be used to welcome travelers visiting our wonderful city. Hosting has always been a passion of ours and ties into our dreams of building a future in real estate. We truly believe this would not only be a wonderful opportunity for us personally, but also a small positive addition to our city, bringing warmth, hospitality, and connection to those who visit. Thank you, guys. Any questions?
All right, thank you very much. Any questions for applicant? All right, the only question I have for you is, the list of recommendations was long, and you're ready to comply with all of those?
Yes.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone present that'd like to speak in favor of this case? Anyone to speak in favor? Seeing none, anybody who would like to speak in opposition? And I will ask again, anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Yes, Commissioner?
I recommend approval of case 25-200-10, special use permit for 711 North Arapahoe Street.
Second.
I have a first and I have a second. Any final discussion?
Who's the second? Who was?
The second.
Give it to him.
Commissioner. Commissioner Torres. All right, and any final discussion? All right, I'm gonna call for the vote.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Chairman Wiley?
Yes, and the motion passes 7 to 0 for case number 25-2010, special use permit, 711 North Arapahoe Street. Congratulations and good luck. All right, we move to our final case of the evening, birthday boy Mitch. All right, case number 25-211 for a special use permit at 1112 Dickinson Road. Staff?
Yes, as you stated, this is a special use permit request to operate a light equipment sales business and display utility trailers in a paved area in the front of the property. The property is located off of 24 Highway at the intersection of Dickinson and US 24 Highway. It's a notification area map, as required by City Code. A zoning analysis of the subject site and surrounding properties. To the north is Dickinson Road, large lot, single-family residences along Dickinson. To the east is general commercial zoning district with laundry service. To the south is a high-density residential garden apartments development, along with single-family residential subdivisions. And to the west is a large tract of vacant unimproved land. Independent, or imagine independence, excuse me, comprehensive plan 2040 designates a neighborhood land use category for the subject site. Commercial businesses are included in that neighborhood land use category, that classification. And the comprehensive plan directs the city to promote growth, investment, and opportunities in the business and job sector by focusing retention on existing businesses. Aerial imagery of the subject site, it is, again, located at the northwest corner of US 24 Highway and Dickinson Road. The parcel is approximately 113,000 square feet in size, or 2.6 acres. The property contains a multi-tenant commercial building, enclosing 10,000 square feet approximately in size. There are two driveways to the subject site, so one that crosses independent school district boundaries off of US 24 Highway, along the southern property line, and another drive entrance off of Dickinson Road. The majority of the parking lot is composed of gravel with a paved area closer to the building. The applicant proposes to pave a display area for utility trailers. The applicant provided a site plan, so the utility trailers will be displayed close to the lot line, the parcel boundaries along the southern property boundary, close to that drive entrance off of US 24 Highway. So, just a little bit of background on this request. There is an existing light equipment sales business at this location. That'd be Fairfield Motorsports, that engages in the sale of recreational vehicles, so minibikes, ATVs, et cetera. This particular request would add an additional display area of utility trailers. In accordance with City Code, the outdoor display of light equipment does require a special use permit when it is in close proximity to residential zoning districts. Because of its close proximity to residences along Dickinson Road, that's the, imposes the requirement, or initiates that requirement for the special use permit approval. Staff does recommend approval of the special use permit request. I actually do have one modification, so if you didn't catch it already. Condition number one, the applicant shall obtain and maintain an Independence business license pursuant to Chapter 5 of the City Code. So, Chapter 5 was omitted, and I do apologize about that. The rest of the conditions remain the same. The applicant shall obtain a building permit to pave their display area. And the applicant shall comply with all applicable regulations, all use regulations of Section 14409 related to the display of light equipment. And that concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you very much. So, the applicant is seeking to expand their business, basically?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any questions for staff commissioners?
Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Nesbit?
This is a special use permit, will he have to, I know you say he's gonna have to pave the parking lot, but is he gonna have to do green space or anything, or is that grandfathered in?
As part of this rezoning request, green space will not be required. It would just be a small area. I have to check the site plan again, but I think it's like 200 square feet in size, so it's pretty limited compared to the rest of the site.
Okay, so he's not, he's just gonna do the display area for paving, is what you're saying?
Yeah, the use regulations for light equipment sales in Section 14409 requires light equipment to be displayed on an all-weather surface, concrete or asphalt. That is the reason the applicant is proposing to pave a small display area in the gravel lot.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? All right, I invite the applicant to come forward. All right, Mr. Fieldfield?
Yeah, I'm Stephen Fairfield, 1112 North Dickinson Road. My family's owned that building for 30 years, and I've had my business in the center of, there's three businesses in there. So, I'm really not, he's correct, I'm looking to expand, but I'm looking to get a separate business license to sell trailers, because I'm not licensed to do that at my recreational business right now.
All right, anything else we should know?
That should do it.
All righty, any questions for the applicant?
Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Nesbit?
So, my question's gonna be, my question's gonna be is that, you're gonna sell trailers there, you're only gonna pave 200 feet, square feet of the lot?
Yes, just for the display lot.
Just the display lot, okay, because I mean, what happens when you get more than what you need in your display lot? Are you not planning on having more?
Not in my display lot, no.
Okay, so what I'm getting at is that, what about when you have other ones parked around for repairs?
They're behind the building, and that's partial concrete and partial gravel.
So, behind the building's concrete?
Yeah, it's partial concrete and partial gravel.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any additional questions for the applicant? All right, at this point, anyone who'd like to speak in favor of this case? Anyone to speak in favor? Not seeing any? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? Once again, not seeing any. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. And I will entertain a motion.
Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Nesbit?
You say there's no capital improvement projects over there? Isn't there a project going on right now down through there?
Yes, the, and forgive me, but the idea behind that was, the project's already been completed, so the drive entrance...
Okay, so that's already been done, so that part, okay, I didn't know how far they were along over there, haven't been down there, so, okay.
And one additional, so I did misspeak, so it'll be closer to 2,000 square feet of paved surface, because it's 90 feet by 22 feet, so...
Okay, that makes a big difference. 200 just did not seem like nothing.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And I just want to clarify, so at 2,000 feet, it still doesn't meet the requirement of the space that would require it to be the whole parking lot covered?
Yeah, exactly right, so the requirement is specifically for the display area, and they haven't met any threshold that requires any additional improvements beyond what's required from a parking lot permit or regular building permit.
Okay, perfect. And I will entertain a motion.
Chair.
Yes, Commissioner?
I make a motion to approve case 25-211, special use permit, 1112 Dickinson Road.
Right of first, do I have a second?
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Young? All right, any final discussion, commissioners? Seeing none, I will call for the vote.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Young? Yes. Chairman Wiley?
Yes, and the case motion passes 7 to 0 for case number 25-211, special use permit at 1112 Dickinson Road. All right, at this point, I am going to adjourn our meeting at 711.